June 16th, 2016, meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
All present.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Charles Cook of Cookeville Free Will Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag. Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here tonight to discuss the business of our city. Lord, we pray that you would lead those that will speak tonight to use wise words and help wise decisions to be made. Lord, thank you that we do live in a city where we can come and share together and discern together. And, Lord, we just pray for our leadership tonight. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Right, do we have a motion?
Promote.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote.
Fabius votes, motion carries.
Okay, at this time, I am for a presentation of awards to the Police and Fire Department. Must say, I've never felt safer at a city council meeting.[101.61][101.61](Laughter). We're very honored tonight to have these gentlemen here. I know the word hero gets thrown around really loosely in society, whether it's for athletes, or movie stars, or whatever, but true heroes are these gentlemen right here and those others that serve our community and serve us on the battlefield. That is the true definition of a hero, and we're certainly honored tonight to recognize some individuals, not just in their everyday heroics, but for truly heroic efforts for our community. So, at this time, I will recognize Captain Carl Sales for remarks, and then we'll have some presentations.
Gentlemen, ma'am, this evening, we have the distinct pleasure of presenting awards to multiple members of the Cookeville Fire Department and the Cookeville Police Department. As members of the city's two public safety agencies, these employees provide a valuable service to this community every hour of every day. However, occasions will periodically arise without warning that test their skills and their abilities beyond the normal expectations of public service. As further proof of their commitment to community service, the first two incidents recognized today are for actions taken while the first responders were off duty. Jeff, would you please join Chief Evans at the lectern? The first incident occurred on January 15th, 2016. Sergeant Jeff Johnson was off duty eating with family and friends at Logan's Roadhouse when his friend's wife began to choke. Sergeant Johnson quickly performed the Heimlich maneuver on her, dislodging the obstruction from her airway. For his actions on this date, Sergeant Johnson is receiving the Medal for Life Saving. Toby, would you please join Chief Fuqua?
The next incident occurred on May 28th of 2016. Reserve Engineer Toby Lee was off duty when he saw that his neighbor's house was on fire. He directed a passerby to call 911 while he attempted to make entry. After some effort, he was able to physically force open the door while his neighbors were still unaware of the fire. He then evacuated the two occupants of the house and helped suppress the fire. For his actions on this date, Reserve Engineer Toby Lee is receiving the Distinguished Service Medal.
The remaining heroes, would you please join the chiefs over there?
Lastly, on April 5th of this year, a resident of 530 Cypress Avenue called 911 saying that her house was on fire and she was trapped inside. Multiple officers from the Cookeville Police Department arrived on scene and took action in an effort to save anyone still in danger. Their determination was only intensified when they heard a woman inside respond to the officer's shouts. Despite two officers actually entering the burning residence, they were unable to locate the trapped woman. One officer was inadvertently trapped in the burning residence during the rescue attempt. While getting the trapped officer out, several officers suffered injuries requiring medical treatment. During this time, multiple units from the Cookeville Fire Department arrived and took control of the rescue effort. Firefighters were able to start suppressing the flames while other members of the Fire Department entered the residence to search for survivors. After locating one resident still alive, firefighters were able to rescue her from the burning residence and take her to the ambulance for transport to definitive care. The following recipients clearly distinguished themselves by providing exceptional service to the community during this incident. Reserve Engineer Gage Bumbalo, Distinguished Service Medal. Officer Kyle Farley, Medal of Valor and Purple Heart Award. Lieutenant Mitch Harrington, Medal of Valor and Purple Heart Award. Officer Shane Livingston, Medal for Life Saving and Purple Heart Award. Lieutenant Mike Lynch, Distinguished Service Medal. Sergeant Kerry Matheny, Purple Heart Award. Lieutenant Paul Parrish, Distinguished Service Medal. Reserve Engineer Matt Prowse, Distinguished Service Medal. Engineer Tyler Sullivan, Distinguished Service Medal.
This time, we'll call on Dal Harris, if he has a presentation as well. And then, everyone stay around, we'll come back up for pictures up around here with the rest of the council in just a moment.
First of all, let me express our sincere regrets to the families' loss of our residents, Mr. Ricky and Mrs. Martha Owens, who passed away in this fire. Our thoughts and prayers are with the surviving family members, if any of y'all are present. Certainly, we want to express our sincere regrets. We want to also express our sincere and immeasurable appreciation for the city of Cookeville, our Honorable Mayor, certainly members of the city council, and all our first, or emergency first responders. We really appreciate you, and especially the Police and Fire Departments. You do a great job for this city, and for that, we say thank you very, very much, and it's most appreciated. What I'd like to do now is read the resolution adopted by the Board of Directors of the Highlands Residential Services into the record and present that to our mayor and the Cookeville City Council. Whereas on April 5th, 2016, at 10:30 PM, there was a fire at 530 Cypress Avenue, Cookeville, Tennessee, and whereas upon arrival at the scene, Cookeville City Police Officers found a work in fire in progress, and whereas responders from the Cookeville City Police Department and the City of Cookeville Fire Department were contacted and provided assistance in the incident and worked seamlessly to resolve the crisis, and whereas first responders from the City of Cookeville Police Department and the City of Cookeville Fire Department risked life and limb in an attempt to protect the citizens of the City of Cookeville and the residents of Highlands Residential Services, rendering exceptional care to persons with life-threatening medical injuries and forfeiting their own safety and well-being to protect others. Now, therefore, I'm sorry, let it be resolved that the Board of Directors of Highlands Residential Services recognizes all those public safety personnel that responded to this incident and wishes to express the heartfelt appreciation of not only the board, but the larger community for a job well done. The Board of Directors of Highlands Residential Services goes on the record to honor all those through their time and service to their community on a daily basis, and in times of disaster and human suffering, carry out the critical role of protecting life and property and ensuring the safety, security, and well-being of this community. We appreciate all of you. Approve this 19th day of May, 2016. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Dal, and again, thanks to each one of you. If what we'll do is, the council's going to come down, and we want to go in the same ord- I'm sorry? Yes, as we're going to come through, just in the same order that we presented, we'll come back up, and we'll make a picture, and then we'll go from there. So, Jeff? Hi, one second, if we could. The council might have a couple of comments here, just before everybody leaves.
Yeah, I would, I'd appreciate our safety personnel to stick around just for a second. I just, I have one comment to make, because this is, this is kind of personal for me, gentlemen, and ladies, and all you folks that do stuff. I sent some of you letters and cards about appreciation of what you have done, and those are definitely sincere. Back in 2013, I happened to be on site when the, and this is a great segue into our next presentation, but I happened to be on site during the Boston Marathon bombing, okay? I am a healthcare professional, and it is my passion to take care of people in their time of need, okay, when they hurt. But it never became as real to me of what you do, of what you do, it wasn't until that moment, because when it happened, I was wanting to get out of there. I wanted to leave. I wanted to go. But guess, guess who was going in? Guess who was going in? All of you folks were going in, and that is, that has rendered my heart and my mind, it's completely changed my way of thinking about the way of what you do. I'm very proud of you. I'm very proud that our city of Cookeville has such committed, selfless, and great, great people here. So, I just want to share that with you, because it's one thing, it's one thing to say, oh, I appreciate our safety personnel, our police and fire, but it's another thing to experience, experience that, what I did. And, gentlemen, ladies, thank you very much for what you, and God bless you guys, everyone.
Any rest of the council?
Mayor, just real quickly, you know, as I was sitting here watching the presentation, I couldn't help but think about the first organization, City Club, I joined when I became active in Cookeville, and it was the Cookeville J.C.'s, and a lot of J.C. Creed, just, I kept thinking about this afternoon, "Service to humanity is the best work of life." And even the scriptures tell us that to be the greatest of all, you be the servant of all. And this, these acts that we've honored here tonight are not just, I believe, not just what you do and do well, but it's who you are. Not just what you do, but it's who you are, and we are blessed and we're fortunate to have you as a member of our team here at the city of Cookeville. God bless you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've said earlier in some meetings, I've had the privilege and honor to have attended the police and fire academies. Fire and police departments offer a little bit of information as far as attending some classes that last about 10 weeks, and you get to see a little bit of what these gentlemen go through in each department, and you get to realize how difficult the task these individuals have, and what kind of men step up and do this. And it is a situation where I invite any citizen, when these academies, Fire Academy or the Police Academy, when they say they're going to have a class, try to attend these. You will learn a lot. There's things that I thought I knew about each department, but was sadly mistaken. We have great individuals in our Fire and Police Department, and you get to get into their world in some extent. You don't get to do exactly what they do, but you get to see from their perspective how things are done. So, it's a well-received and a very beneficial class for you to take. So, please, if you have an opportunity, do it.
Cookeville is a very special place. I can remember back in 1997, when we first got funding from the hospital to buy AEDs that we have in the community now with the fire and the police and the EMTs, and we've saved a number of lives, and y'all have gone into situations and saved so many people that we've been declared one of the safest places in the United States for sudden cardiac arrest because of the efforts of all the fire and police and EMTs here. So, this is just a continuation of what we've been doing since 1997, and we really appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
I'll just close with all these great comments. Again, y'all are true heroes. I have a special place in my heart, too, because my dad was chief of the Fire Department, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't, just as we remembered our heroes here, that we remembered a hero we just lost, too, with Bruce Womack, because I know he would have been front and center, patting every one of these guys on the back, congratulating them tonight for what they did. So, we'll remember him and see his son back there, so I know, very proud. But thank you all very, very much. We'll pause a second, if whoever wants to clear. Okay, we also have a very great presentation of a proclamation tonight to the Boston Marathon runners, and I will read this now. Let's see, the folks that are here, let's have them come up. Everybody want to hear from the runners, all of our runners, come up to the front?
They may be out in the hall.
Oh, are they out in the hall? Okay. Brian, can you run out there and get them and tell them?[1278.14][1278.14](Laughter). Okay, gotcha. Yeah, all the really thin people come up here against the wall.
Further?
See how much room we have? That may do it. Pretty close? Okay, awesome. So, we're here to honor, I'm going to read this proclamation, and then we'll come down and have some pictures made as well. So, wait, before I read this, do you want to, this is kind of your, go ahead.
Let's read the proclamation.
Okay, and then you can, all right. All right. So, whereas the Boston Marathon is the oldest and most prestigious marathon in the world, and whereas being an age-qualifying marathon, criteria is 26.2 miles for runners, and whereas with acceptance for only the top 5% to 10% of marathon finishers by age group, participants are truly a part of an esteemed group and a testament to the devotion, drive, and commitment for this achievement, and whereas recognition is given to the sacrifices made for such successful results, all the while balancing obligations to families, careers, and the community, and whereas representation of Cookeville, both as an individual and as a group, confirms that our citizens have a desire to be fit and active, as well as a dedication to goal achievement, further validating the Healthier Tennessee Communities Initiative and the aspiration for an active, healthy community, now therefore, on behalf of the Cookeville City Council, we Ricky Shelton, Mayor, and Larry Epps, Vice Mayor, of the City of Cookeville, do hereby proclaim a profound sense of appreciation for the Cookeville qualifiers and participants of the 2016 Boston Marathon, and do applaud the everyday successes of our residents, the 16th day of June, 2016. So, I'll let our resident most-fit council person and runner speak to this.
I'll take any vice mayor on in the state of Tennessee, I tell you what. This has been a long time coming. We, I have been an observer and a fan of the Boston Marathon now for a very long time, and a lot of people don't get it, because only about 1% of, only about 1% of the entire population will go out and run a marathon, okay? So, and then to, and then to qualify and/or run, like all of you did, okay, only the top 5% to 10% is an exceptional achievement, okay? And that, I think that's very important for Cookeville, because we have had people that have participated in the Boston Marathon each and every year, but to have nine, nine people qualify for the Boston Marathon is exceptional. And what it does, and I hope you guys understand this, and I hope the rest of Cookeville understands, I hope the media understands this, that this represents, you guys represent something, a movement, that, not something, a movement that's going on in Cookeville that is, that is exceptional. And that exception is, is that we are, we are a healthy, a healthier, we are indeed validating a healthier Tennessee community. For each and every one of you, there are hundreds, there are hundreds of other people that are out there putting their, putting their shoes on early in the morning, going out and pounding the pavement. And you, and one of the reasons why I think this is so important for me, and I know it's very important for Councilman Womack, is because you guys represent, you're just the tip of the iceberg, you represent hundreds, if not thousands, of people that are participating and trying to stay healthy, and we applaud, and I applaud, what you've done. To have nine Cookevillians, okay, and we talk about some of our cities, some of our cities in the state of Tennessee that are exceptional as far as promoting with running clubs and outdoors stuff and getting out there. Let me give you kind of an example. If Memphis, Memphis had 25 people participate in the Boston Marathon that qualified and/or run, if they would have been up to Cookeville standards, they should have had 131 people participate. Nashville had a grand total, whopping total of 52 people that participated and/or qualified for the Boston Marathon. They should have had 132, 133. Knoxville, Knoxville actually did pretty good. They, given their population, they had 28, and they should have had 36. And Knoxville is, they're our competition, okay? But Chattanooga, which louts itself as being one of the most fit, the most fit outdoorsy, got people going nuts and crazy, got an Iron Man out there and stuff, they had a grand total of seven people participate and are qualifying the Boston Marathon. They should have had 34. So, I think this, I think this is an exceptional example of some of this, of how we are a healthier Tennessee community. And I have a couple asterisks I want to point out here, just a couple asterisks on the folks here, and let me just say some of the names, and then I'm going to kind of leave you out because you're not a Cookevillian, okay? So, don't take it personal. Jeremiah Tatum, Mike Riggs, Angie Clark, Dallas Smith, Les Delante, Mary Ellen Parsons, Drew Randolph, Susan Ford, and Brian Shelton, all you guys qualified, all you guys Cookevillians qualified for the Boston Marathon. Some of you didn't run, because you had, you had stuff you needed to do, and those, I want to just point out a couple exceptions, asterisks, that even, it's even, even more, makes it even more exciting. Brian, but he came in second in the country music marathon. That's a tough marathon, and you lost, you lost a guy that's ran it and won it like four years coming, okay? So, you were, you were a rookie coming in and taking on a veteran. If you'd have come in second place, you, is fantastic, is absolutely fantastic. Susan Ford, you're a qualifier for the Kona World Championship Iron Man Triathlon in Hawaii, coming up, is that in October? We're going to be rooting for you, okay? Okay? And you didn't have the, it didn't fit in your training schedule, but you chose, you could have ran the Boston, but you chose not to, okay? And then Dallas Smith, Dallas, how many marathons you ran now? 100 plus?
I'm approaching 100, I'm 90-something.
You've got, how many, how many records, age group records do you have in the state of Tennessee?
I have close to 100 age group records.
100 age group records, and, and this should be an inspiration for all of us that are getting older, okay? Should be an inspiration for all that's getting older, myself included, is that, is that you came in, I think you came in, when you did the, when you did the World Championships Ironman in Hawaii, didn't you come in your age group, didn't you come in like ninth place or 10th place? I think you did. No, but you participate in the, in the World Champion, the Kona, didn't you participate in Kona?
No, no, I've done Ironman races, but not Kona.
All right, well, never mind, but you're still, okay, I was like trying to embellish this, keep, just keep going with this, never mind, just forget that. I think 100-plus age group, you know, 100 marathons and bajillion age group, age group records are enough, that's enough, but I've said enough. You guys are special, and you do represent, and Dr. Womack, I hope you get a chance to say something about this, I'd like you to, how you represent so much of what's going on in this city, and I think, I think we're one of the healthiest, most active cities in the state of Tennessee, thanks to you guys.
Dr. Womack, that's a good segue to you.
Thank you. I was going to say this at the end of the council meeting, but you're just representing us in healthier Tennessee, and we plan walks out at Kang Creek Park and Dogwood Park on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to go walking, and you're doing the Boston and being able to do that, you're an, you're an inspiration for the rest of us who cannot run marathons to get out and do some walking to try to keep in shape and to try to be healthy. So, we're having walks at 8:00 AM on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday out at Kang Creek Park at the rec center, so anyone who wants to. at the Rec Center, so anyone who wants to come, walk, not run, we're happy to have them, but thank you for what you do.
Come on out if you want to, just get warmed up.
Mayor, real quickly, and Vice Mayor Eppson, Dr. Womack, you know, I've been, I've been, I've been bragging a lot, because I've been walking a couple miles in Kane Creek Park every day, I think I'm gonna just shut my mouth and go home. Congratulations to y'all.
I just want to thank you for setting a good example for the rest of us to try to even approach whether we're walking, or jogging, or running. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you. Brian is my nephew, and obviously you can look at me and understand where he got his running skills from, not, that's a joke, it's a terrible joke, I don't know where he got those from, but he is my nephew, very proud of him, very proud of each and every one of you for what you do for our community. So if y'all will come up to the front, and all of us will come down one more time, and we'll make a picture, and we've got a healthy Tennessee banner for y'all to hold as well. Okay, item 5A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 2nd, do we have a motion?
It's on move.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
5B, consider on second and final reading ordinance 0160506, rezoning property located on West Broad Street, tax map 53B-P-5.04, from MS Medical Services to CL Local Commercial. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the location of the property, there in yellow. This was unanimously approved by the planning commission, we've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
5C, consider on second and final reading ordinance 0160507, rezoning a portion of 1976 North Dixie Avenue from RD Single Family and Duplex Residential to CL Local Commercial. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the subject property depicted on the screen, this was also unanimously approved by the planning commission, recommended by the planning department, we've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Consider on second and final reading ordinance 0160508, rezoning the northeast corner of Breeding Avenue and Flat Hollow Road from RS-15 Single Family Residential to RS-10 Single Family Residential. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, the subject property is depicted on the screen, aerial view, this was approved by the planning commission, it's recommended by the planning department, and we've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Four yes, one no, motion carries.
Thank you.
5E, consider on second and final reading ordinance 0160611, providing a tax levy for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Ms. Emel.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance sets the tax rate for the new fiscal year, and it's a reappraisal year, and as of today, we still have not received the certified tax rate, so just a reminder, this ordinance says that the tax rate will be 90 cents, or whatever the certified tax rate is, if it's different, and it'll be rounded up, so it is considered a tax increase. There's been no changes in the ordinance, and we have not received any calls or comments since first reading, and I'd recommend your approval.
So, just, just for clarification, while it's considered a tax increase, it will be a decimal, a decimal point tax increase, the rate will be reduced, so the 90 will become, 91 will become 80 something, we don't know what that is yet, if it's 82.5, it'll be 83, if it's 82.7, it'll be 83, so it's, it's merely an increase for the decimal rounding?
Right, a fraction of a penny.
Fractional rounding, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a motion?
It's on move.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7F, consider on second and final reading ordinance 0160612, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the 2016-17 fiscal year. Ms. Emel.
Mayor and council, this ordinance sets the appropriations for the governmental agencies, joint ventures, and nonprofits for the new fiscal years. The total amount in the appropriation is $778,999. There's been no change in the amounts, we've received no calls or comments first, since first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7G, consider on second and final reading ordinance 0160613, making appropriations for the various funds, departments, and agencies of the City of Cookeville, Tennessee for the 2016-17 fiscal year. Ms. Emel.
Mayor and council, this ordinance sets the appropriations for the expenditures for all the funds and all the departments for the city for the next fiscal year. I'm just gonna go through these totals very briefly, I'm not gonna go through all the detail again, but the general fund is, the total amount's $26,161,462. Stage Street Aid is $3,313,000. The Solid Waste Fund is $1,832,780, and I will remind you that the Solid Waste Fund, we do not have a residential fee in there, we are reallocating 4 cents of the property tax to that fund, and there will be a 10% increase in the commercial fees. The Drug Fund, total appropriation there is $61,750. Tree Board Fund, $2,800. Animal Control, $276,426. Economic Development, $303,743. Quality of Life, $437,702. The Geo Debt Service Fund, $3,842,499. General Improvement Bond Fund, $19,188,967. And just a reminder, that includes a not-to-exceed $10 million bond issue. The Employee Insurance, Health Insurance Fund, $4,985,505. Workers' Comp Liability Fund, $650,012. Water Quality Control, $21,463,861. The Electric Department, $57,144,915. The Gas Department, $10,117,499. And the last two, Customer Service Department, $1,276,614. And Cookeville Regional Medical Center, $304,572,344. There's been no change in any of the amounts since the first reading, we've received no calls or comments. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
How much is this all together, all the, adding all these numbers together? It sounds, looks like a lot of money.
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I don't have that total.
Looks like, you know, close to 400, 500 million dollars.
450 or so million.
450 some odd million.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Any other comments? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item 6 is the consent agenda, we have three items. 6A, set a date, 7/21/16 for a public hearing on ordinance 0160616, amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 14, Chapters 5, 6, 7, and 8, relative storm-water-related regulations. 6B, consider awarding bid for chemicals for the Water Quality Control Department, and 6C, consider awarding bid for decorative poles for the Electric Department. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
It's on move, second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 7, New Business 7A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for stop-loss insurance coverage. Ms. Emel.
Mayor and council, the city maintains a stop-loss policy for our health insurance plan. This policy ensures us for very large claims, and the policy's an annual policy. We are requesting your authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract for fiscal year 16-17. The contract will be with Blue Re, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield company, and they have carried our policy for the, for two years now. The renewal premiums will be 4.7% lower than our current year, savings of a little over $10,000 in premiums. The premium for single contracts will be $17.30 per month, family contracts will be $42.63 per month, and with the current enrollment we have, the approximate annual cost will be about $203,000 in premiums. The individual deductible will remain the same at $150,000. However, the specific aggregate deductible is going to increase by about $10,000, from $50,000 to $60,000. So basically, what we're saving in premiums, we're assuming a little bit more risk in claims. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item 7, New Business 7A, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for stop-loss insurance coverage. Ms. Emel.
Mayor and council, the city maintains a stop-loss policy for our health insurance plan. This policy ensures us for very large claims, and the policy's an annual policy. We are requesting your authorization for the city manager to enter into a contract for fiscal year 16-17. The contract will be with Blue Re, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield company, and they have carried our policy for the, for two years now. The renewal premiums will be 4.7% lower than our current year, savings of a little over $10,000 in premiums. The premium for single contracts will be $17.30 per month, family contracts will be $42.63 per month, and with the current enrollment we have, the approximate annual cost will be about $203,000 in premiums. The individual deductible will remain the same at $150,000. However, the specific aggregate deductible is going to increase by about $10,000, from $50,000 to $60,000. So basically, what we're saving in premiums, we're assuming a little bit more risk in claims. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Yes, sir.
May I ask you, I think I know this, but with regard to the stop-loss, are we talking about individual and family stop-loss, or a comprehensive stop-loss?
It's per, per individual.
Okay.
So if we have an individual that has claims in excess of $150,000, this policy will reimburse us for those claims.
And I know last year, we went through the resident process, we're keeping an eye on insurance fund because there's concerns with it. Is there, is it too soon to tell if it's stabilized, or what direction it's going in, or how you feel about that?
Well, through May of this year, we've already had two individuals that are on our plan that have exceeded that $150,000, so it's been a rough claims year, so. We are looking at changes for 2017's plan year. The committee met last week, and we met with our broker just yesterday, and are trying to come up with some ideas to, to offer some different tiered plans, or what have you, but, you know, the cost of healthcare just continues to rise, so, I mean, it's something that everybody across the country's feeling. So, and it just takes one bad claim, you know, one visit to the doctor to find out that you've got a serious illness, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7B, consider declaring a surplus property, 603 Murray Street, Gainesboro, Tennessee, and 601 Brown Street, Salina, Tennessee, for Cookeville Regional Medical Center and CRMC COO Scott Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we are asking that you surplus two pieces of property that is currently owned by the hospital, one being 603 Murray Street in Gainesboro, Tennessee, which is a previous medical office that was acquired when the Salina Hospital was purchased. We've not used that facility since that acquisition, and we're intending to auction the property. The second is 601 Brown Street in Salina, Tennessee. Also, it is a medical facility that has not been used since the acquisition of the Salina Hospital. We do have a local medical, medical provider in Salina that is interested in the property, and we'll be auctioning that off as well.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7C, consider rescinding motion of 121715 and reconsider property acquisition of Quality Medical Center property located at 201 West 5th and 251 West 5th for Cookeville Regional Medical Center. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We originally intended to purchase the property of Quality Medical Center, but one of the physicians that owned the property made the decision to go back and get a second appraisal, got a second appraisal, which was considerably different than our original appraisal. We negotiated with the parties and came up with a price of $645,800, which is approximately $50,000 more than the original appraisal.
Okay, thank you, we're gonna do this in two motions, so I need a motion for rescinding the original act of 121715. Do we have a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, on that, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, now we'll have a motion on acquiring the property at the stated price from Quality Medical at 201 West 5th and 251 West 5th. Do we have a motion?
It's on move.
And a second.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
We need to make sure everybody knows that this property will be titled in the name of the City of Cookeville.
Absolutely, yes. Just as the property that we sold under 7B was titled City of Cookeville, and they were merely asking permission to sell it.
Exactly.
Very good, we have a motion is second, no further discussion, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider approval of costs for Nashville Eastern Railroad to construct the relocated Ridge Dale Drive Crossing. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, as part of the realignment of Ridge Dale Drive Railroad, we'll have to reconstruct their crossing at a new location. They give us a price not to exceed $68,500. The railroad will be performing this work, and I would ask your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7E, consider approval of costs for Nashville and Eastern Railroad to construct six crossings for the Rails With Trails Project. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and council, as part of the Rails With Trails Project, the trail crosses the railroad at six locations. The railroad will construct those crossings for us from within 10 feet of each side of the rails. The total cost for the railroad to construct these is $33,495, which is $5,580.50 apiece. A grant is funding this project, which is an 80-20 match, the government was responsible for 20%, which is $6,699. And the three participating governments, Putnam County, Allgood, and City of Cookeville, their share would be $2,233 of this. I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7F, consider approval of change order number three for the Rails With Trails Project. Mr. Brown.
Mayor and council, as part of the trails projects, like any other project, we run across some unknown factors. This change order amount, total amount is $81,239.35. We've had a previous change order that reduced the contract amount by $33,508.50. So the change to the original contract amount, adding those two together is $47,730.85. The contract with the change order will bring it up to $1,826,632.85. And this is a grant-funded project, 20, our match is 20%, which comes to $9,546.17. Each government, the same governments as before, were responsible, $3,182.06. Some of the larger amounts in this change order, we removed $110,400 for road and drainage excavation, we added $60,375 for undercutting, which amounts to running into bad soil that won't support the trail. We added $73,000, $73,500 for borrow, which is bringing in dirt in to bring the trail up to acceptable grade. We also had the addition of $68,044 for a chain link fence. The railroad required us to put the chain link fence in when the trail is closer than, 18 feet or closer to the trail. Everywhere else, we're having plants, eucalyptus planted instead of that, but they felt they wanted a hard barrier in that location, so they required us to add that to the project. I request your approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
It's on move.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7G, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a reliability standards memorandum of understanding with TVA relative to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Bulk Electric System Rules. Mr. Peak.
Mayor and council, you may recall, back on April 7th of this year, I brought a request to you to approve conveying some 161 KV bus to TVA at our South Cookeville substation, which would allow us to avoid registering with Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Back at, at that April meeting, at the end of the presentation, I told you that power distributors, all 158 in Tennessee Valley, would be working collectively with TVA and TVPPA to come up with a document, a memorandum of understanding of exactly who is gonna do what. And we have that now, that's what I'm presenting before you. The documents and the policies, again, were a collaborative effort between several groups. The policies and procedures are gonna be used to ensure full compliance of the reliability standards, and to, again, delineate the reliability-related tasks. There's a termination notice in this to... There's a termination notice in this. This city could terminate it within 30 days. There's a $400 administrative cost that we'll be paying to TVA. But remember, when I presented the conveyance, I think this is gonna probably save us about $100,000 the first year, and probably $20,000 each year thereafter. So I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7H, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a TVA license agreement providing for the installation of three transmission line structures at South Cookville Substation. Mr. Peak.
Mayor and Council, as we had some discussion at our work session, we're nearing completion of our project at South Cookville Substation. That's the installation of an auto transformer, a 161 to 69, that would allow Cookville to be in a better position of reliability. TVA currently owns the 69 facilities in Cookville that feed three of our 69 KV substations. You might remember, a couple of years ago, one morning about 8:00, we lost about, or TVA lost about 70% of Cookville. And so we've been working on a project to put us in a better reliable position. That's nearing completion. We're needing, TVA, as in this licensing agreement, has given us permission to go on to their easement, set a couple of structures, which will allow us to connect that auto transformer to their dual line at that location. And James, there's a, if you would, you can see the substation left center, and the hash lines coming out to the TVA right-of-way. We'll be pulling an overhead line out, too, and setting three poles in that TVA 69 structure. The permission that TVA's given us is solely for the purpose of installing, operating, maintaining the transmission facilities on the licensed premise. And if you'll back up on, James, real quick.
Don't show up real good. But the licensed premises, where the hash lines come out and meet that right-of-way, yes. From that pole to the pole two, what I would call the south, James, that is the licensed And again, this will allow Cookville Electric to energize the 69 facilities from its South Cookville substation in preparation of Cookville purchasing all the 69 facilities from TVA, using those as a backup, but having a new source for three of our substations. In summary, I'd recommend your approval, but I'd ask that your motion include that city council is not waiving any immunities afforded under the Governmental Tort Liability Act. And with that, recommend your approval.
Thank you.
Just make that as a motion. That will be included in the motion, so is there a motion including that wording?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
7I, consider authorizing final payment to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for Phase One repairs to Center Hill Dam. Mr. Kelly.
Well, Tatty, can you get us over on the right, or is it not working?
Steve Burger.
Oh, I've been clicking.
I clicked on.
Okay, here we go. Here we go. Okay, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna get us back, most, you're all familiar where we are with this, but the water storage agreement was signed with the Corps of Engineers on 2003, and in that contract, there's a provision of repair and replacement and rehabilitation costs that the city's responsible for, and that portion is .533% of any projects to any kind of maintenance and repairs in that reservoir system. So, one of the things that's at question is, if the dam was considered a major rehabilitation project, Cookville would pay the 100% of those costs. If it's considered a dam safety assurance project, Cookville would only pay 15% of those repair costs. During the process, the Nashville Corps of Engineers District Office, after a outside panel of experts did a report on the reservoir, they recommended that it was a dam safety assurance designation. The Great Lakes and Ohio River Division concurred with the Nashville District's office that it was a dam safety project, but when it kicked up to the Assistant Secretary of the Army, they designated it as a major rehabilitation. So the impact to Cookville residents, water users, is a differential there of 1.2 million. Our cost is 1.496 million. If it's a dam safety, it's 224,000. So the rate difference there is 1.2 million. So that's where we've been. Back on May 5th, 2016, council authorized us to pay the 15% of that, what we thought we, our position is of what we owe on the project. And so we sent a check in, Corps of Engineers accepted it, but we've been in contact with our Congress delegation, and then trying to work, trying to get it, get a resolution through those channels. But we're getting down to, the end of June, we're currently incurring a 1% penalty for every month, per annum. And so at the end of June, we're going to, that increase kicks up to 7%. So I think we're recommending tonight that you go ahead and authorize us, the city manager, to pay the 85% payment with the accumulated interest on the Phase One of that Center Hill Dam project. And would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay. We have labored back and forth over this, and it is with complete reluctance and disgust that I make a motion authorizing the city manager to pay the remaining portion of the Phase One Center Hill Dam repair and accumulated interest, but such payment is made under protest, and the city manager should notify the Corps of Engineers that the City of Cookville reserves all rights to pursue any available avenue for recovery of this payment. And that is a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Council, would you all like to utter your disgust over this?
Mayor, if I could, Ronnie, let me see if I got this right. All the way up the chain of decision-makers, we were told that this was a safety issue, safety issue. Until we get to the Assistant Secretary of the Army, and he has deemed it to be, she has deemed it to be, thank you, Mayor, has deemed it to be a rehab issue, rehabilitation. To the extent it were safety, our part of the cost would be 15%. But suddenly, with this decision, that doesn't, isn't consistent with all that we've had so far, now we've got 100%. And if we don't do the 100%, pay the 100%, we're subject to some pretty serious fines to the extent of $7,000 a month, about $100,000 a year. And as I understand it, Ronnie, there's, from that point of the Assistant Secretary of the Army, there's no appeal.
No. That's my understanding. That's correct.
And we don't believe legislatively, as it relates to our congressman, or two of our United States senators, they haven't given us much hope that anything would be enacted legislatively that would change it either.
At this point in time, that's correct. We're continuing down that path, but at this point in time, that's true.
It's not right. And you fought a good fight, and I agree with the mayor. This is not right. And we still have the window open, possibly to, maybe, and attorney may address this better, but perhaps the window would open that we could file suit to recoup some of this later on, and we don't give up the right to do that in this action. Is that what?
That's correct. I think that, Dan can speak to that better than me, but I think that reserves our rights.
The most realistic chance of any relief is legislative, and with this election year, I think that's really the biggest obstacle. And with the penalties the Corps is imposing, and the amount of money it's gonna cost us to delay until next year, it's better to pay this under protest and then continue to try to seek some legislative relief. The Corps of Engineers is kind of an entity unto itself, and I really don't think, it would be very difficult for the courts to interfere at this point in time, but the Congress certainly could if we get support from our congressional, you know, delegation, both congress, congressmen and women, and our two United States senators. So hopefully, after this election debates are over with, we can get this as part of the package to try to recover this money.
So it sounds like, Ronnie, then we have but little choice but to hold our nose and vote yes. Is that?
Yes. Pretty much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. We've, in work sessions, and we've been going over this, city council's been going over this for a long time now, and yes, it's been very disappointing. And for me, one of the most disappointing things that I've had in experiencing this is that, I guess, I don't know how to say it, the lack of concern that we've received from our federal, state House representative and our senators. We have, it almost feels like, we're like the little guy, okay? And they just don't really, I've kinda felt like they just don't really have time for us. Albeit, it's an election year, et cetera, you know, it doesn't matter. The bottom line is, is our rate, the people that are paying the rates are paying, they're paying for water here in this, our town, the rates are gonna go up in order to pay that. It's basically a tax increase because of that. So it was, it was a considerable amount less, and all of a sudden, because of one person's decision, it became a lot more. We didn't have a whole lot of options to pursue that because the Corps is an entity unto itself. Our recourse was to try to get help from our legislators, and I don't think, if I, I don't think I'm speaking incorrectly, Mr. Mayor, that that did not, that did not happen. So I just let it stand, I hope that I'll stand on record that I'm very disappointed in that part of the process. Anybody else?
I agree with everything the Vice Mayor and Dwight said, and the mayor said, but it's something we've gotta bite the bullet and do to avoid interest rates of 7% for our ratepayers. So it's disgusting, but we have to do it to avoid a lot of money down the road, so it's just something we have to do.
Ronnie, I wanna thank you for the tenacity that you've had resisting us over the years and trying to protect the ratepayers in the City of Cookville, but we're at our end, and we're gonna have to pay instead of suffer the penalty. But thank you for all your effort.
Thank you.
Just to reinforce two or three points, this is $1.2 million of our citizens' money, your money, for an arbitrary bureaucratic decision that, of a group that apparently reports to no one, and no one can, has any control over. Literally, I have and he has sent dozens of letters on behalf of our council and our city, and phone calls, I can't tell you the number of phone calls, both conference calls and straight phone calls that he's been on. And it is ridiculous and sad that we could get no help, as the Vice Mayor said. It's completely frustrating that a bureaucratic governmental entity, you should be able, when we as a city, we have no recourse except to go to the people above us to ask for help for a group in Washington, and we get no help trying to do something, trying to do something with this decision to a group that apparently, literally, reports to no one. It is the most bizarre thing I've ever seen, but it pretty much is Washington, so I guess we should expect that. But anyway, just remember, that's $1.2 million of your money that is, that we're having to pay, so ultimately, at some point, it could cause a rate increase because we could get no help. And we fought it every way we could, but we would literally be throwing good money after bad, and that's why, that's the only reason we're approving this. I just, we've all said it, I'm just reinforcing it 15 more times because we're, it reminds me of the time we actually had to pay to get the money, the water out of Center Hill Dam to begin with, which is a whole nother frustrating process. Thankful we're getting our water from Center Hill, very thankful for that. Please don't cut us off. But anyway, that's it, so.
Hold my nose when I vote yes.
So we, a motion is second, discussion, let's all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Check's in the mail.
Okay. At this time, that concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have time now, if anyone would like to speak, for up to three minutes about items not on the agenda, you're welcome to do so. Yes, sir. You'll come to the lectern and just identify yourself, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Charles Cook, and I pastor the Cookville Freeway Baptist Church at 833 South Willow Avenue. Property runs along Willow Avenue and Newman Drive. I'm here tonight to share a concern on behalf of my church and others in our part of the community over proposed business being developed on property across from the church. The business also sits next to a Cookville housing development, and within close proximity to a community drug and alcohol treatment facility. It is my understanding that the property is being developed for a brewery where beer will be made, sold, and consumed. Given the often destructive role that alcohol plays in the problems of those who seek help from the church, and those who seek help from the drug and alcohol treatment facility, and given the challenges that face some of the city's most disadvantaged residents within public housing, I believe, along with others, it is necessary to state my opposition to a brewery being opened in this location. After talking with others who live, work, and worship along Newman Drive, there are others who are opposed to the establishment of an alcohol-producing, selling, and consuming business at this location. This belief is evidenced by a petition brought here tonight and signed by those invested in the community around Newman Drive. We did not seek to get lots of other people to sign it, we just went through the public housing and leadership within our church to make clear there is opposition. It's an honor to serve the city at a location which calls upon a willingness to assist countless individuals who have fled to Cookville and are fleeing to Cookville to seek safety from physical, psychological, and sexual abuse. Similarly, it is an honor to regularly assist the residents of the public housing development off Newman Drive. The difficulties they face are quickly evident if you minister on that side of the city. Given the context of the area in question, I, along with members of my church and others, believe numerous reasons actually exist for opposing a precedent for the establishment of businesses along Newman Drive whose primary intent is to make alcohol, and money from alcohol through sales and consumption. Cookville is always changing, but this is the first time the neighborhood has been faced with a business seeking to open on the street and literally next door to neighborhood institutions that have invested countless time, energy, and hours in helping those whose lives are being destroyed by personal alcohol addiction, or whose lives are being wrecked by those who live under others who are addicted. We ask tonight, with others, that the city council take any action available to keep alcohol-drinking-focused businesses off of Newman Drive. If no action can be taken now to help us, we do ask that rules be considered, or ordinances, or whatever the terminology is, that might assist others in the future who find themselves in situations similar to ours. People have various opinions on drinking alcohol, but I have been encouraged, from a ray of people with a ray of opinions, who have all stated it is not in the community's interest to allow breweries, bars, or pubs next to public housing, drug and alcohol treatment centers, and churches that minister those. Can I just have a copy of our petition that we passed?
Thank you, Pastor Cook. We'll enter that into the record. Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak tonight on this matter? Or any other matter? Council?
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to respond to the pastor's comments, and preface my remarks briefly by saying this, you know, we realize that most people who consume alcoholic beverages don't get DUIs, and they're gonna be beaten up their wives, and they don't cause trouble, and we know that. And I would say also that I appreciate a telephone conversation with Manny Edwards, who's gonna operate this business, and he was polite, courteous, we had a good conversation about it and expressed concerns, and I appreciate that, too. But just, and these are my personal thoughts now, but the fact of the matter remains that, and I pastor the church, and pastor a lot of domestic, sometimes domestic problems that come up in the church, you deal a lot of issues, a lot of issues that the, obviously, the rehabilitation center deal with, and even, we got a letter from down, like there, with the Housing Authority concerned about the placement of this brewery at this particular location, oftentimes, and I was raised in public housing, so I know a little bit, I can speak to that a little bit, also, in that some of the domestic issues that happen there, the product, be it the church, be it the rehab center, be it the Housing Authority, the product that will be brewed and will be consumed and be distributed there is a common denominator in all three, in domestic problems and issues, be it the church, rehab center, and the Housing Authority. And so, as there is, and all three have expressed concern about it. And it is my, I'm fully persuaded, I am fully persuaded that while breweries are legal entities in our state, in this area, they are, they exist legally, that the placement of this brewery right here at this particular location is not in the best interests of our community. And I'm discouraged and saddened that by the same token, Mr. Edwards has every legal entity in his business that is a liability. And I'm discouraged and saddened that by the same token, Mr. Edwards has every legal leg to stand on by putting it there. And it, so, and I don't know, it's just, it's one of these things that we're just, we just dealt with, government shouldn't work that way. And that's why the more decisions that can be made totally in the local community, the closer the government is to home, the better it is. And the more decisions that are made by the community, the better off we are. And there's been a lot of mixture there, but after talking to our attorneys, and spent a lot of time on this myself, and believing at large that it's not in the best interest of the community to place it there, not that it's not legal to be placed somewhere, we don't have a legal leg to stand on. And to me, that's sad, that's sad. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else have comments on this or anything else, counsel?
The fact that this facility, this brewery, this brew pub is being placed there is a factor that influenced me two weeks ago. There was a motion to expand liquor store placements throughout Cookville, and we've got nine liquor stores in Cookville. I think that's more than enough. We don't need any more expanded. So that was my reason with the fact that what happened to this congregation, and we don't need to be expanding liquor stores anymore. So your problems caused me to make sure that we don't expand liquor anymore as far as liquor stores. So I sympathize with you, I've asked the city manager, all the people on the city council have asked the city manager, is there anything we can do to help you or help prevent something like this with another church in the future? But according to our lawyer and our city manager, there's not much we can do. So we have sympathy for you, and as I said, it's influenced my decision to not support expansion of liquor stores in Cookville. So all I can do is say I sympathize with you.
Want me to speak to this?
Yes, sir, please.
You know, I sympathize with you, too, in your plight, but similar to this issue with the Corps of Engineers and the dam, these decisions really aren't made by the city council or the citizens of Cookville. The state of Tennessee controls liquor and alcohol sales primarily in this state, and they've taken that away from the city. For example, there are no distance restrictions at all if somebody wanted to open a whiskey bar. So if this wasn't a beer place, they could open a whiskey bar right next to any church in the city of Cookville. Beer can be restricted by the city of Cookville, but beer can only be restricted to, so that it can't be any closer than the beer establishment is closest to the closest church. And unfortunately, there's already one establishment that sells beer that is much closer to that church than this beer establishment would be to your church. So the city legally, and that's a state law, that's a state law. So the city can't enact the distance requirement just to protect your church when another church and beer establishment are already much closer than the one to your church. And that's, that's the state law. But even if the city could do something for you, that gentleman could have, change it from a beer pub to a whiskey bar, to a whiskey bar, and there would be nothing the city could do at all. So basically, it comes back to the fact that the state of Tennessee is really controlling the sale of alcohol by the drink and things like that in the Tennessee right now, in the city council's hands, and I think every member of the city council is very sympathetic to your plight, that our hands are just tied, our hands are just tied legally.
Anything else?
And we are, oh, you do have something?
Yeah, I do have something. Pastor Cook, I admire, I admire, and this is to your deacons and your laity, I really admire your comments, okay? I also admire the mission work and evangelism that you guys are doing. I mean, you're obviously, you're obviously engaged in professing the light into the world, okay? I appreciate that very much. I'm, I can't, I mean, that, just one other thing I want to, I'd like to mention that no one else has had the chance to mention, and I agree with my colleagues, is that we are blessed with growth, we really are. Cookville's, Cookville is the place to be. People want to be here, and in large part because of what you do, okay? Because of, it's not because of, so much because of, you know, the smarts that we have sitting up here, or our administrators, it's because people want to live here because it's, it's, they want to, they want to live here and do business here because of, because of, because of people, because of the folks that live here, because of my neighbors, because of your neighbors. We're blessed to have that. Unfortunately, there's problems that come with that, and our legal advisor, Mr. Rader, had spoke to that very well. I, like Dr. Womack, I chose, I chose not to approve the expansion of the package stores, in part because, it's not because nine is enough, or whatever, I'm very, I'm very much a capitalist, okay? I think, you know, let, let folks, if they want to go out there and do their, if they want to give it a shot, give it a shot, but mostly because of the plight that you had, is that it just all of a sudden happened, and we need to have very thoughtful, and very thoughtful, and a very slow process in trying to approve that. It just sort of showed up at our desk, and I wasn't, I wasn't prepared. So I voted against that because of some of the plight that you're having. I wish we had more time to be thoughtful and to do this, but again, our hands are tied. I'm going to put a little positive spin on this, I think this gives us the opportunity, since we're, we recognize this going on, and how this, this is now something that we need to be very careful about, that it's an opportunity for us to explore our options in the future, okay, when this, this sort of stuff happens. So I look forward to that in order to, in order to enable growth, and enable some of the things that makes Cookville a great place, but also be a good neighbor, be a good neighbor to you guys, and what your mission and what the work you're doing. So that being said, thank you for, thank you for comments, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. We had a conversation today, and we certainly understand. I still, I told you today, I think it's a fertile mission ground, a sign on the side of your building that says our happy hour is 10 to 12 on Sunday would be cool, I think, and, you know, who knows, that might reach somebody. So just remind you, also, our city Soapbox Derby is Saturday, out on 12th Street, that'll be closed Friday and Saturday, Friday afternoon and Saturday for that, and certainly, I think there's about 60 racers in that. So if you want to go out and look at that, I think it starts about maybe 9:00 AM and goes till probably 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, so. If that's all of our business, we will be adjourned.